Um, so y'all are just gonna have to manage the fact that I've never actually. Been a host of meeting before.
You said that last time.
You guys on mute? I can't hear you.
I'm on mute.
Leo, can I make you co-host?
Sure. I think your machine's muted. Now, can you hear me?
Jess, can you hear any of us? Wow. Oh, show off. Look at that.
Oh, I know, really?
All right, you guys have to take, can you see that?
Oh, come on.
Oh, my gosh.
We're literally on a mountain.
Oh, it's the mountains in New Hampshire.
Look at the dedication.
Dedication. We'll, we'll see. I might die out.
Help me, Leo. Help me. I just made you a host. And what's going on with you? Okay.
You're good. Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
No, can Jess?
Turn up your volume. Someone text Jess.
Why don't you do that?
Luckily, there's nobody out there in TV land.
We hear you, Jess, or I hear you.
He can't hear us.
Oh, she can't hear us. Okay.
All right.
Bummer. Probably just the volume on her.
Yes. Yep.
Oh, look at that. It was just my volume. My.
This is literally what I just said.
It's.
Okay, so let's all wait. Somebody's missing from the audience, so we have to wait.
Okay, so.
This very well could be my last meeting. I'm gonna goof around, guys. So, just telling you.
Okay, so I need you, Leo, to help me so that I don't shut down this, this meeting while we all go over to the executive session.
Okay.
I don't know. I mean, usually Owen does his like kind of way he wants.
I will stay logged in here and post the meeting. And then I will hop in on the, my iPad into the other meeting.
Is that how this is gonna go? Okay.
Works fine.
Okay, cool. So we, oh, so we'll just take a vote to go into blah, blah, blah.
All right. Uh, I am going to call this public session to order and ask for a motion to enter into executive session to discuss issues related to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And this would be in reference to the Medfield Teachers Association, Unit A and B. And I'm going to do a roll call. So, Leo Bram?
Here.
And Tim Knight?
Here.
Megan Glenn?
Here.
Anime O'Shea Brook, looking very jaunty. And Jessica Riley here. We will return to open session immediately after the executive session. So, thank you very much. I am going to leave now. Leo is going to leave it open and we will go to the executive session.
Okay, cool. Ciao.
Leo, if I end it?
Don't end it.
I'm not gonna end it. I'm just gonna leave it.
You're just gonna leave, because I'm a co-host. You can leave. Yeah.
Okay, thanks. I don't know how to leave. Darn it. All right, I'm gone. I'm out of here. Oh, Owen is the host now. Thank God. Owen, let me out. I'm in like, I'm in host jail. I'm leaving now. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Bye.
All right.
I'll be back in a bit. Very shortly.
Yeah, Owen, you're gonna, you're gonna keep it open?
Yes. Are you guys gonna return back to this?
We are. Probably fairly shortly. Okay.
Unless, Owen, if you have someplace to be, I can leave this one in. I can log in on the machine.
Okay, yeah, no, no, I can cover it. That's fine.
Oh, you're the best, Owen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Trying to bring you over. I've attempted seven or eight times, but it doesn't seem to be bringing you in. So, just so you know, I'm gonna remove you from this and hopefully you can try and join again.
Did that work?
But you can talk.
Excellent. Well, I could probably also turn on my camera. Depends.
Just for now, I have you permitted for talking. For some reason, the video, it won't.
You know something? I may have so dang many Zooms open right now. Am I still with you?
Yep.
Okay, I'm closing down a big bunch of Zooms. And we'll see. Here we go. Well, this is unfortunate. I mean, I don't need to see myself on screen so much more, but does seem to help. Do you want me to try it one more time, Owen?
Yes, that happened once to me and it was because I left my camera open on my actual device.
So I didn't even know I could do that.
Okay, make sure your camera in your settings is not on.
Okay.
I don't know.
Hey, Owen, what if I tried one more time to go in and out? Are you okay with that? Owen?
Absolutely.
Okay, I gotta go in and out. I'm just gonna shut down Zoom and then go back and then try to get in. Okay?
I wanted to tell you that you'd exceeded my patience, but.
Really? Sorry. Okay. See you in a sec. Maybe.
Hey, Leo, does the Mac have the option of making the background blurry like that, or is that just PC? Mac could do that?
Yeah, it's in the latest release.
Okay.
Yeah, just go.
Being that in a few meetings, so I was wondering if next.
I can send you a blurry image too, if you just want a blurry image. They. I see. Like this. This.
Can anybody see me?
No.
No. All right. That's fine. Whatever. It's a little arced some, but that's okay. I really don't know what happened there. Okay. Uh, is Anime with me?
She is.
Okay, so funny, I don't see her either. Oh, wait, she wasn't gonna. Okay.
Yes, sorry, I'm here.
Okay, and do we have any other attendees right now, Owen? Guys, do we have anybody in the attendees list? Because I don't see anyone.
No, I saw people earlier. I don't see anyone now.
I saw one person earlier.
Okay, but there's nobody now?
No, there is one.
There is.
Kristina and Kupas just showed up, yeah.
Okay.
And you are an attendee as well. I'm not quite sure why.
That's, that's fine, because that's, that's what Owen had to do so he could hear you.
Okay, great. Okay, so, uh, to those of out in TV land, I'm very sorry that, um, you were not able to see me, but I'm having some technical issues. So, you were able to hear my voice. I am here and I am in Medfield. And we will now start the meeting at, or reconvene the regular session. It is 4:26. And, uh, good afternoon. We just returned from executive session in which we discussed matters covered under exception three of the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, which is to discuss issues related to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And this discussion pertained to the Medfield Teachers Association Units A and B. Um, and within the executive session, the committee voted to approve the latest memorandum of agreement with the MTA regarding the move to full in-person learning. And once that MOA is officially signed by the MTA president and by myself as the chair, uh, we will post it to the school committee page of the district website. So, uh, I will now call to order this March 23 regular session of the Medfield School Committee, beginning with a roll call. Leo Bram?
Here.
Tim Knight?
Here.
Uh, Megan Glenn? Megan?
Here.
Okay, thank you. And Anime O'Shea Brook?
Here.
And Jessica Riley. Okay. So this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the Medfield TV YouTube channel. The first item on the agenda is approval of minutes. So, uh, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for the regular session meetings on January 12th, 2021 and January 28th, 2021? Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'm just looking them up real quick. I just wanted to check, check one other thing, because I was confused earlier with something for Andrea. But so the January 12th, that's the public meeting, correct?
Both the January 12th and the January 28th public meetings. Yep.
Okay. A motion to approve.
Okay, so Anime approves. And then a roll call. Leo Bram?
Hi.
Tim Knight?
Hi.
Megan Glenn?
Hi.
Anime O'Shea Brook? Anime, I think we might be losing you. Okay, I'm gonna proceed without, and I think we can make a note that Anime's connection was lost at 4:28. And you will pipe up again, I'm sure, if, uh, we can find you. And Jessica Riley. Okay. So the motion passes minus Anime O'Shea Brook. Um, and then do I hear a motion to approve and retain the minutes for the executive session meetings on January 28th, 21, February, uh, 9th, 2021, uh, February 11th, 2021, February 22nd, 2021, and February 26th, 2021? And that's for, uh, approve and retain.
So moved.
Okay, Tim Knight, and do I have a second?
Why are we retaining those, can I ask?
Because they're currently, uh, they are about issues that are still currently under negotiation. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Leo. All right, roll call. Leo Bram?
Hi.
And Tim Knight?
Hi.
Megan Glenn?
Hi.
And Jessica Riley. I assume that we do not have Anime here still. Okay. So the motion passes.
She is showing up as, as being here. Maybe she just can't hear us.
You know, I suspect that, uh, her, well, now she's there. But she's gone. I, I think her connection is too tenuous. We might just have to.
Good time to nominate her to do things.
Yes. Okay, so the other business that we have to discuss tonight, or today, uh, is under new business. It's the annual town meeting article seven. Uh, this is a discussion and a vote. I'm sorry.
Second, Anime.
Anime? No, 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 hold on. Yeah. Tell you what, let's see if we can establish your connection a little better, but we'll just kind of proceed without you maybe wanting to dial in again. All right. So, uh, we wanted to have a conversation about, um, whether we should withdraw Article 7 or ask the select board to, or the selectmen to withdraw Article 7, um, for, which is, um, off of the warrant for the annual town meeting. And I will have Dr. Marston talk about specifically why that is. And then we can have a discussion amongst us, but in the first place, I'm going to read the article. Um, and I want to kind of preface this by saying that the warrant committee actually recommended after Dr. Marston and, uh, after Michael went over and kind of presented them with, uh, kind of budget shifts that we can do for fiscal year 21, that we could remove this safely and not have to come back to the town meeting, annual town meeting, to ask for additional funding for this year to cover our COVID expenses. So the article number seven that we are talking about right now is to see if the town will vote to raise and/or transfer and appropriate a sum of, some for the purpose of funding COVID-19 related expenses in the fiscal year 21 school operating budget. And to meet this appropriation, a sum will be transferred from, um, was it free cash? I'm reading from the draft article.
That, so the, the, the regular, I mean, it's still in draft form, so they didn't know where it coming from. So that's why there's those X.
Right, right. Or do or act anything in relation there too. Um, so the warrant committee last night recommended in their, uh, meeting that we withdraw that after, uh, Adzella and Michaela Francesca and Jeff, uh, Dr. Marston and Megan met together. Um, but I do think it's worthy of a discussion. Um, so Jeff and Michael, do you want to kind of take away your, kind of how we got to the point where we no longer feel as though we need this particular appropriation from the town at annual town meeting?
Yeah, so if you remember, we had a, um, meeting on November 10th in which the school committee, Board of Selectmen and Warrant Committee, um, all met to discuss, uh, potential uh, deficit in the FY21 budget. Uh, if you remember at that time, uh, Mike had gone over some spreadsheets and projections of where we were in terms of um, supplies, PPE, and the additional folks that we had to, um, to hire at both aides and teachers to open up in the fall. Uh, so, Michael and I have been working on this, uh, for a little bit. And, uh, on 3/18/21, I sent all of you and the warrant committee a memo, uh, regarding the FY21 deficit. And I'm just gonna go through that quickly if I may. We continue to focus our attention on reducing the budget deficit related to COVID-19 expenses. Below the areas of savings and reductions to the FY21 budget, some of the savings are due to COVID-19 restrictions in our hybrid model implemented in September of 2020. Other reductions in line items that could impact programming require some costs to be reorganized and reprioritized for the FY22 budget. The school department would no longer need this article at the annual town meeting to supplement FY21. If you remember the conversation on, in November was, this was kind of our insurance policy and our safety net. Um, if we weren't able to figure this out and, and we were in, in trouble at that point, we were projecting around a million dollars way back when. So, the anticipated FY21 deficit as of last week was 869,000. And that was really all due to, um, expenses related to teachers and aides that we hired, uh, for the remainder of the school year. Uh, following sources could be used to eliminate the FY21 deficit. Uh, the biggest chunk of that was our special education prepaid to, uh, transportation and then a credit that we got from the collaborative. So a one-time opportunity to prepay special education transportation in August. And then we were notified, uh, recently of a credit that we applied to our outstanding FY21 costs at the collaborative. So that's a big chunk at $400,000. Um, then we looked at individual line items and budgets, reduced English, uh, 6,000, uh, health and wellness, 2,000, uh, reduction in supplies and materials due to restrictions with COVID. Family consumer science, 4,000, again, reduction due to lower use of food, uh, because of the COVID-19 restrictions. Uh, 15,000 for music transportation. Uh, the transportation for competitions was not needed for FY21. Uh, reduction for 4,000 in physical education. Uh, athletic transportation reduced 10,000. We had no state tournaments. We had a truncated schedule for fall and winter. Um, curriculum PD, 35,000 less opportunities for teachers to participate in PD due to the pandemic. Obviously, there's not many offerings, uh, for teachers in that regard. Uh, library media reduction, supplies and materials due to library transformed in the classroom spaces. Um, the NIAAS visit, uh, NIAAS pivoted to a, uh, virtual visit and that reduced the cost of the accreditation process. You know, typically it's, um, paying for hotels and meals and all that for the visiting team. And that wasn't necessary this year. And they just, you know, let us know that, um, you know, after the budget was, was approved, uh, supplies and instruction, um, reduced $10,000 per building. Reduced supplies, materials and professional development in central office for the same reason why it's not available for teachers, certainly not available for central office as well. Um, we reduced maintenance by 30,000 because we utilized grant funding to men, for many of these expenses and didn't have to use operation for that. Uh, we saved $34,000 September through March, uh, with regular transportation because we're in remote on Wednesdays. So the total of that is 618,000. Um, and then the spreadsheet that went along with that also highlighted a couple of grants. One was the State Coronavirus Prevention Fund program, uh, which was $75,000, which we just, uh, received a few weeks ago. And then the SR2 grant for 176,000, uh, which was the stimulus. It's not the current stimulus that you're hearing on the news now. Uh, we had a meeting with the commissioner today and they were talking about, you know, what that impact could be, but the application for that next stimulus is still a few weeks away, they told us. So that's not factored into this at all. So with the additional uh, reductions and the, uh, the COVID grants, uh, we reduced it to 86988. Uh, so we feel pretty comfortable that we'll be able to do this in FY21 and really not have the need to ask the town for that additional money at town meeting. Um, and I think it, you know, it serves purpose of, of allowing us to, um, have our, our FY22 budget stay intact at 3.99 uh, with the additional money that was going to be used for this could be allocated to our FY22. So that's kind of the quick overview of where we're at, but I'm happy to answer any questions or Michael certainly can answer questions as well.
Uh, Michael, do I have anything to add to that? Or, uh, should we just open it up to the floor?
No, you can open it up to.
Anime is back. All right.
I know. Sorry, guys. So I have a question. Jeff, that is, so if we were going to keep Article 7, though, and request that money, um, what would we do?
Well, the way the article was written, it's for COVID-19 expenses. So, um, we've, we figured out this way to just to get all the COVID-19 expenses in FY21. So, I can't imagine that the selectman would even support it beyond tonight, really. I mean, I feel like, um, if we've, we've, we've shown a pretty good pathway of how not to need that money, um, the selectmen are the ones that control the warrant. So, I mean, if I were them and the warrant committee voted that, I mean, I would, I would vote to dismiss it too, but, um, it's not like, it's not like it's a, it's a windfall of money that we're gonna get. It was really to offset those costs. And we've figured out a way to offset those costs, so.
I have a follow-up question there. Um, because I know that the school committee, we didn't write this article and, um, I don't know why. Why wasn't it written, um, to be stipulated to cover COVID-related costs? To cover COVID related costs when it was my understanding in the beginning of this, this was the procedural way in which. We were going to recapture the chapter 70 monies that due to the selectmen's. Decision not to hold a special town meeting, which would have appropriated these funds over to us. This was the procedure by which we would get the money back.
So I mean, I mean, I can answer that if. So I remember at that meeting on the 10th and we could kind of go back on that and look at what the minutes of the video says, but it was my understanding there that. It was really our safety net and our insurance policy if and when we went over our budget. Now, if this if they the town chose to use that chapter 70 money, then that that's great, but. It wasn't unless I missed something at that meeting. It wasn't explicitly said that 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 was. Going to be chapter 70 money that's going to be given to us because of that. It was. And I remember Gus explicitly saying that this isn't a blank check for the school, the school committee of the school department. You know, this is to cover any costs because we were projecting at that time a deficit.
Yeah, and it was interesting, Jeff. I'm glad you said it was November ninth. These were my notes. I was just looking it up. And I'm not sure that it really matters, but the way I am. It is inconsistent, at least the way the warrant reads because my notes, we said request article to fund expenses. Over and beyond or any any deficit using free cash based on chapter 70 funding that exists today. Like that was at least my notes. I'm not saying I took perfect notes.
But I. Standing as well, Tim, that it wasn't stipulated to anything until I saw actually the 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 language in the article. I was not aware. That there were stipulations on it. I thought it was just the transfer of the money into the school, the school account.
Well.
Go ahead, Leo.
As my my recollection was that the money was there to use to make up any deficits. And the reasoning for leaving the money in the town side at the time was. To keep free cash on hand for credit rating purposes. And that was my understanding, but. And that it would be transferred at the time of be transferred to us, you know, as needed. You know, the way I kind of see it in the sense of. What's not spent now will get spent or given back and then sent back to us regardless of the path of the money. I hear what I hear what Megan is saying. I believe in Tim as well as that it was intended to be earmarked for schools by the state and. I think I think that to me, and I can see that I can see the it's a little confusing to me as well. I will say that, but I think what's important to me is that we're getting what we need. We're balancing the budget and getting what we need for next year's budget. And I think that's the part. That I'm really worried about because I'm worried about FY 23 budget process, which will start this coming September. So.
But Leo, what I'm getting at is that have we I understand we should be happy with a 3.99 budget that. Doesn't get us what we wanted. That was what they asked us to do. This is a level funded budget of a budget that was already cut by a million to last year.
Correct.
There are things missing from that budget that we all agree that we want.
Yep, that's fair.
Right? And so I just say, walking away from the money that was supposed to be transferred to us, that's. We're it's never coming back. We're not going to get that back. And I know that Ed Vazella said it's a half of a dozen of one and whatever that sting is and. And that if we move the money to us and then don't use it, it falls back into free cash as a turn back. So be it. See if see what what isn't used, but I I just can't fiscally. Depend on credits that we don't know the numbers of yet and. Grants that we haven't yet met approval for. And let's, how are we going to fund pool testing for the rest of the year? We're going to have parent volunteers pay pay money for that. When we have sitting there, that's for our schools.
That's a fair question. Is there any way to get pool testing out of that?
I think this is one of those questions we can turn to Michael and Jeff to see. To specifically talk about where they're seeing their numbers. How. How certain they are of them and also the avenues to pool testing because I.
So what you have on that spreadsheet is it's money in the bank. I mean, that's 100% as far as. I mean, it could be variances here and there and everywhere, but as far as it's pretty close to that number. So I mean, I I guess it's a philosophical question because you need to look at. I understand what chapter seven, I understand that that 10% of that was earmarked for education did not directly go to us. I get all of that understanding. However, I will say that there's something called net school spending. And that school spending is what's required to be spent per town. By the state and every town is assessed a number of what they're required to spend. And I would say historically and forever and ever, Medfield has always spent more than that. A lot more than what they have to spend in education. So if we can come to an agreement working with the town so that we have a balanced budget townwide and we still get what we were asking for. Because we're getting what we did in the public hearing in January. That's what the town is 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 working with us now to get to get to that number 3.99. That's pretty good. That's pretty good to be in that in that in that spot. So I feel like. That along with the fact that this does nothing but help out the bond rating for additional free cash helps out the bond rating. When we go to borrow for a new elementary school. I mean, I think it's it's looking at a wider view other than just what FY 21 is, but looking at the big picture of the town finances. And, you know, we got all of our staff back this for next year. We're going to be able to add that guidance council we wanted. Sure. There's always something else we want to add, but you know, in my eighth year, eighth budget year here, I'm usually cutting, cutting, cutting. And we're still in really good shape where we are as far as what we did at the public hearing, which you guys approved is your budget. And we're keeping staff. We're not laying staff over off and we're actually adding a guidance council that's desperately needed a secondary level. So I feel like it's a win for everyone as far as what the school gets, what the town gets, and we benefit from it. Either it's through the bond rating with the with the new school. Or it's somehow it comes back to us. I mean, it does come back. So the town. Has always been supportive of the schools and it comes back to us and just because a certain amount was earmarked. Yeah, I mean, I wasn't crazy happy about that. I think we should have had a town meeting in the fall, absolutely, like all my colleagues in other communities, no doubt about that. But at this point, but at this point, this gets us to what we need for FY 22 and it helps that the town now can get what they need. And by the way, the town is getting millions of dollars in stimulus money for the next couple of years that hopefully you're going to be able to support with as well.
Well, the schools will have access to some too. I've just learned on the ARP funds too, and I can share some resources on that, Michael and Jeff as well. Yeah, I figured you did. The the one thing I am happy about that I'm thinking that this does is this. Creates stability in the budget process for the next few months until town meeting, right? Until we can. And we can plan for the coming year now is what it's sounding like because instead of worrying about whether or not we're going to be able to meet the budget if this is. Setting the budget and Warren thinks it's going to put forward this at annual town meeting, then I think. I think it's better to put it to bed now. Than to have a variable out there if needed now I. Barring any other. Something else that we need, and I know there's always something we need, Megan. I I hear you 100%. No, that's absolutely true. And I remember last year's cut list as well. So.
Those none of those positions were replaced. They're gone. This this budget didn't get them back. So I hear what you're saying, Jeff, this being what we asked for, but this is less. Than what we got last year. That's what I'm stuck on. And in a in a year that we've. Experienced so much trauma and so much loss. I just feel like not maybe if not all of it, some of it. Can go towards the recovery for our students. I don't know. And just the the fact that you even said you were mad when we didn't get a town meeting in the fall. It would have just put the money right. We wouldn't be having this conversation, you know, I don't I don't know what has changed. I just can't.
What has changed is what what's on that spreadsheet, right? That's what's changed. So the fact that we were able to prepay that transportation, we got the credit. I mean, those things have changed. I think. I just think we can't be short sighted in this. That's all.
I think I do hear the idea of raising money for the pool testing for the rest of the year. I think it'd be if there's a way to get. Townside to pick up that tab. I think that would be helpful in this process as well as instead of leaning on the community, although I know the community is chipping in left and right. Who knows, they may have. Bill Warner may have already raised that money by this point because I know it was building quickly. And I have to tell you, it's been great goodwill in the town. So. Outside of that, though, I think I hear that as well. If they're sitting. On COVID related funds from a town perspective. I think the was the number is a 50,000. So Mike.
Was taken off of the capital budget list that now I don't I don't I just don't think we're getting it right, Michael.
Can you repeat that?
Capital that didn't make it make the cut of the capital budget list. That's like 200 grand.
Correct.
Was that IT?
Yes.
Yeah, well, is that. Was there IT infrastructure in for this coming capital year?
We.
In particular.
So we moved 100,000 back into the operational budget and they funded. I have to go look at the capital. I think they funded. Fifty. It was a 50,000. I have to go look at it. I apologize. I don't have it in front of me right now.
This way, there's opportunities in the ARP funding around that around broadband and any of the access and that those internal connections as well. Hopefully, I know the state's going to be giving that a lot of that out or 90% of it. But I think there is a minimum that's going to supposed to go per student, I thought, but I would have.
Michael, what was the total number for? That we got on the first stimulus that the town got, the first CARES Act, 700,000?
Eight twenty.
Eight twenty. Okay, so that was town money that was allocated to town, not to the schools that we were able to access 820,000 in this fiscal year. So I think you look at it that way too, right? I mean, that that was town money that was allocated to town that we were able to access. We bought all the we bought all the. The MacBooks, all that stuff for the teachers, all that. So. You know, that could be that you could make a strong argument. That's 300,000, right? I mean, that we got all that from them. So I just think it's we got to. Again, in my opinion. Look at the a broader view of all this as the town and the school together and not just town and school. Once we tease this all out, that's all.
So I just want to.
Can I let me just pipe in for a second because I haven't. I understand philosophically you're concerned that if chapter 70. Money that comes to the town that was over what we thought it was going to be when we were able to vote on it in September. If that doesn't come to the schools in. In this kind of like chapter 70 kind of. Package or bow. That that indicates that there could be a future. That that kind of breaks. Kind of a longstanding tradition that schools get chapter 70 and that's it and it never. It should never ever be. Kept within the schools coffin within the town coffers and that that is money specifically meant. For schools and philosophically, I absolutely agree with you. I'm not sure. That. This is the year. That should ever be seen as normalizing a benchmark. For those kinds of. Of decisions this year, the town and the schools have had to. And I think that this is across many different districts have had to scramble to kind of be. Trying to. Work together to make this. Time of incredible uncertainty. Work. I have to say that I if I were to look at. Presenting our COVID debts to. Annual town meeting. But we had the ability to make that up on our own and show. You know, financial resource and financial sophistication around making that happen. But we just went to town meeting to get that reimbursed. On a matter of of principle that that money is ours. Anyway, in which. We only have this small remaining portion of fiscal year 21. I would look at that and think what what are we thinking? Why would we do that? We know you're absolutely right. 3.99. Increase just keeps us where we are now for right now. But. It also. Keeps us where we are for right now, right? Like we actually get to stay and and I know that the town struggles with this as well. There are a lot of things that are kind of broken around the whole idea. Of how we are able to fund our town, but for right now. If I can look. A budget number in the face of 3.99, which is a budget that we voted for. And within that budget, we get additional. Mental health support. And I see some level of. Grants coming from the federal government, some of which we don't know will be assigned to. The. Schools, but a lot of which we do that will be around. Learning. Around how we kind of level. Our kids up around extended. Time if we need it around SEL around all of these things. Sometimes I kind of feel like I need to look at the. I need to look at the kids that are in front of me right now. And say, what can I do for you? How can I make your year next year better? How can I make sure that we have enough free cash? In our coffers as a school, as a town. So that we can get a great or better bond rating and we can get boots on the ground faster before inflation takes over. So that we can build a school for the next 50 years. Because. I think that we need to keep on having these kind of future goals. So yes, if chapter 70 comes to us. Next year and somebody says, you know, we kept that last year and I think we're going to keep it again. I don't have any indication that that's going to happen. I think this is the freakish, the most freakish year that we will. Ever experience, or at least I hope. But I'm not going to make a decision about. About like the philosophy of chapter 70 for this year at this time in the school year in the fiscal year. And make that the the structure for my decision making for the rest of all time. This is an awful year. It's a terrible year. Nobody ever expected this. We never expected that chapter 70 funding would be. Finalized. In what November? And we had to vote on a budget. In September. So no, is it perfect? No, but I haven't seen a single thing that's perfect. This year, and I do think that it is. Two sides of the town. Working as hard as we possibly can. To make sure that we have an eye on the future, be that four months from now. Or be that. 50 years from now. Or even three years down the line. So that's kind of how I have been looking at this. And I have, I feel like I have to. Personally put my feet where they are and point forward. And if. If we look forward and there are times where all of a sudden, you know, capturing chapter 70 and kind of sitting on it becomes the norm. Well, yeah, we're going to have to address that and that's going to.
Can't imagine that ever happening, but.
And I can't imagine it happening. It's never happened before, but this year is freakish. And we've all been wondering and I've said before, you know, it's in any town, if there was a quarter on the ground. Every person would jump on it, you know? So. That's kind of my my statement on this, that there's the the level of practicality that's important. Right now, where we are looking at kids. In front of us versus the philosophical, and I think it's really important to keep the philosophical in mind. But right now we have what's in front of us and I just saw Tim raise his his fingers. Which I I think.
Yeah, I'll be I'll be brief on on it because I I can share. There's things I like, things I don't like. I'll hold off. The area and just more clarifying. Who writes the article seven and the thing that I I just. It implies that, you know, by by explicitly calling COVID 19 related expenses and that's exclusively what they say. The implication is we're saying as a school committee, we don't. We don't want that money. And I I if nothing else, I think I that's where. I I like to say, hey, the. To to cover deficits that might occur. In order to run our schools. I feel more comfortable with it, but so I'm curious as to like who who wrote that? When was it written? Because I don't know that I personally saw article seven up. I think that's being written right now.
I saw it today at three thirty six, so that's when I got it. I saw it today at 3:36. So that's when I got it. The town writes it. That's the Board of Selectmen are in charge of that. They write every article, whatever. They approve all that. The warrant committee works with that. So I mean, I don't know. I remember the, I just remember that meeting being tied to COVID-19 expenses. That's
Right.
in November. So maybe I maybe I need to rewatch that video, but
Okay, but Tim, I do have to say Yeah, anime. Let me just clarify something quickly.
Sorry.
Okay. So while that kind of warrant committee language for Article seven that I read to you might have been something that that Jeff saw at late this afternoon. The language that has been on the warrant since January 26, I believe very much reflects that. And in fact, I will try to find it right now.
Quick question on all this.
Hold on, if you could just say, hold on one second, Leo, because I can find it very quickly. I just, I want to make sure that we're clear on this because it's not like we're being slipped. You know, something that we didn't that we didn't have access to. If we had read through the the warrant and looked at it after January 28, which is the copy that they've been working on. It's very specifically. All right, go ahead and talk because I'm going to have to find it.
The same language, right, Jess? I mean,
It is essentially the same language. It's just not quite so flowery.
Okay.
Appropriate funds for fiscal year 21 school budget COVID-19 deficit. And that's what they've been working off of since their meeting even before.
Jess, I've been to every warrant committee meeting and whenever this comes up, they say skip it because we don't know the number yet. We won't know it before the meeting. They don't talk about it.
Okay, but it's in the, it's in the
In any of our meetings.
It's in the warrant committee.
Okay, well.
Packet.
Yeah, and I don't, I brought it up. And the only thing is, I'm just saying it deficits, one thing, you know, related expenses, just I don't want to get too caught up, but I when it's positioned as, hey, there is a deficit that we've we've been preparing for. I love the, you know, creativity and the methods whereby we were able to eliminate that. So that's positive.
I just don't like. Okay, just I want to make sure that when Tim wraps up, Anime did want to speak and I asked her not to for a second so I could look that up. So Tim, if you want to go ahead and then I'll let Anime talk and then
Sure, I will. And then then pass it over. I mean, what I I and I'm not, my mind hasn't made up, but I I do like the fact that we would have the 3.99 of the level funded approved. I like being a good teammate, a good citizen amongst the town because we're all in this together. And I do like, again, Michael, just that we are able to what appears what I'm looking at eliminate the deficit. I just, I don't love the the language or the implication that the town saying, hey, it's COVID-19 only. I could, that that may be semantics. I can get past it.
Only semantics. I think we're just being too concrete.
Sure, sure. So when maybe that's just me, that wife would say sometimes and
Leo, before you, Anime, okay? Sorry, guys.
So and we all were never satisfied with the budget we have. I'm glad that we don't have to go through the same. Last year was so challenging trying to get that manage those budget cuts that went way into April. So I'm happy that we don't have to do that. It's but so that's kind of where I
Just barely. Anime. Okay, Megan, you were next. And we'll get Anime in here.
Yeah, Leo.
Leo.
You're pointing to Leo.
Hello?
Oh, hey, Anime. Go ahead, Anime.
Wait, can you guys confirm that you can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, goodie. All right, sorry. And did I just swear?
Put that in the minutes.
Why? We recorded it.
Certainly isn't the first time this year, right?
Yeah, no, it's dicey and then my battery is going to die. Anyways, there's just a couple of things I wanted to to one, a question and two, just a statement. And that is, so Jeff, just to clarify process wise, you know, this is now this new budget is the school committee budget and we did vote on it and there is affirm or say that I'm wrong. There's no way we can go back and say, well, we have this extra money. Can we now spend 5% or you know what I mean? So we can't change the budget at this point for next year, correct?
So the town has a balanced budget right now.
Yes, exactly.
And our 3.99 is a part of that.
Okay, cool. And then I suppose this goes to, and I completely understand what Megan is saying because it just, it seems philosophically painful to give money back that is earmarked for the schools. However, you know, Tim Knight just said it, you know, we're not in a silo, you know, the the school board or the, you know, the the school district and we do have to work with the town. And I suppose that, you know, on a personal level, I'm just so relieved that because I was going into this thinking, oh, my gosh, how are we going to cut 400 plus thousand dollars? This is people we're losing, you know, we just, we, some of us have said we're, we're going to die on the hill for, you know, a new adjustment counselor. So for me, although, you know, it just seems counterintuitive to leave that money. I don't believe we're leaving that money on the table because the town won't, I see it as the town is not going to give us money that they see we don't need right now. So you know, Dr. Morrison and Michael just listed off all the money, you know, the savings that we had this year. And then for us to say, give us that money and we're going to turn it back. I just don't see it. And and I just, you know, I do want to be that team but then to advocate for our kids and hopefully we can be, I'm happy, I'm relieved that we are not cutting people and programs. Can we ask for more? Start thinking creatively perhaps for next year, but right now I'm just grateful that the town can balance budget during a time where, how long have we been hearing? I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thanks, Anime. Leo, you had something you wanted to
The question I have is, what are we actually needing to vote on if we've already voted the 3.99 budget? The article is not our article. It's the town's article. So
Yeah, what we are doing is voting that we would agree with the warrant committee. It's essentially kind of a kumbaya that we agree with the warrant committee to that we would ask the selectman to withdraw the article. So it's kind of a
Need a vote on that? I mean, I just, because the warrant, the warrant committee only puts recommendations to the to the selectmen, the selectmen still have to vote. I don't know.
Yes, I don't think, I think that this is one of those things that's important enough that we need to have a discussion. And that, given that the discussions I've heard here have been kind of you know, kind of you know, like that there are so many different perspectives. I think that it's important that we vote on on this. You know, Sharon and I had kind of a conversation because, you know, essentially as chair, I probably could have said, you know, we we agree with that, but I didn't feel like that that was I didn't feel like that was the most honest or open way to do it. And in essence, this is a school, this is an article that within the warrant would be listed as select board, warrant committee and school committee because of that three-way meeting that we had previously. So I do think it's important that we vote on it and that we're clear. You know, we don't have to think, and it's truly only a motion to withdraw that particular article. That we don't need to have it on the the warrant for annual town meeting, May, whatever it is now, 18th, because it's also, here's the other logistical part. You know, this town meeting is expected to be two nights on the football field at night May 18th and 19th or wherever the What is it?
17th, 18th.
17th and 18th. And, you know, that is a lot of articles and a lot of time. And I suspect the quorum is going to be pretty concentrated. You know, I don't know how many people are going to hang in with with an outside tonight and not knowing which night this will be voted. Honestly, if we can take some if we can take some stuff off of the selectman's plate and we can be in agreement with it and we can show that there is a level of agreement that we have been able to manage our finances for this year and that we are, you know, that that we are able to kind of set our budget for next year at the 3.99, which is including, you know, like not losing anyone and including a guidance, a school adjustment counselor. I think it's I think we're close enough to solving this problem in specific that it would be just a good governmental move to say, no, we don't need to debate this.
Just, this isn't our budget to be operating. Does the FY21 budget is now under Dr. Morrison's jurisdiction to do? So it, I don't think that is within the role of the school committee now to be you know, making
The budget is always our budget.
Yeah, it's always ours. But I think, what are you saying, Megan? Are you saying that making the, this sounds like a change to the budget and
No, I'm just saying that our role and specifically, I guess I I'm confused as to what my role here as the budget liaison even was. If I can't sit here and advocate for what I feel like is the best for our students. That's, I'm not not being a team player. I feel like I'm doing my job and what I was elected to do.
Yeah, I agree.
I love this town like the rest of us. I'm just saying that I, there's been a series of miscommunications for the entire year that have led to this point to that it would look like we're asking for a handout because we've mismanaged money when that has not been the case. This was a procedural
I agree with that.
That's all I'm saying. And so
I, I agree with that 100%. I do agree with that 100%. I feel like that there is that they knew, warrant commission knew they were getting monies and the announcement came in while we were on the meeting. As a matter of fact. And I think the reasoning around the town credit was one thing. And also I feel like there is a I'm trying to put it this way. I feel like in the three years that I've been on this committee, I feel like that the process by which the budget is done in the town had to be reestablished with new leadership in the town side, new findings that, you know, shifts in the warrant commission. And I do feel like there's still that, you know, the occasional finger pointing from the town side to the school budget, you know, taking up everything. However, I feel like that 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 tone has lessened and and I don't know, Michael and Jeff are in it way more than me, but I feel like it has lessened over the last
I don't, I don't want to be unjustly accused of not being a team player here.
No.
Wait.
And I'm not, I don't
Can I say something?
I'm just
Please go, hey, Anime.
No, 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 because I, I you know, I, I agree with Megan, but they but I'm not.
Hold on, Anime, we are unable to hear you. So in, tell me when, I'll listen for you when you get back. But Megan, I do want to assure you, it's, this is debate, right? This is what people ask us to do. And so by you bringing your opinion to us, but also having been you know, listening to warrant committee and understanding the kind of general overall. I'm sorry, you can't see me talking with my hands, which I realize how much I rely on that. But looking at the overall picture, you know, I think that we are having a a debate on and a discussion about the various ends and outs of how this will go. It doesn't mean that we don't think you're a team player. This is, this is us having you know, a discussion. I think that there have been times where I have also said and not been on the same side as, you know, the other four people in the room. This is what
I didn't mean, I didn't mean it in terms of on the committee. I meant as in school versus town.
Okay, well.
I, I have gone and educated myself through all these meetings and through a million questions I've asked Michael, poor Michael and Jeff so that I can fully understand this. And I feel like I'm in a better position because I was on this last year and developing the FY21 budget, overseeing it this year and been in again on the FY22 budget and no one's even started talking about the amount of stimulus that's going to rain on the town. And I know we keep talking about a bond rating. And I don't think that our little paltry amount of cash has anything to do with really how that's going to be affected.
Okay, but this, I want to make sure that we focus our discussion right now on this specific warrant article, which is because I'm afraid that we've gotten into the philosophical part of this, which is very important. And I am willing to, again, put this in some way outside of the context of this article. With this article right now, do we as a committee, is Anime in the room?
No.
I think
If the article goes forward.
Leo, I think at this point, I'm going to make an executive decision that unfortunately, since Anime has not been able to be here for all of this debate. And I certainly don't want to be violating any part of, and she's, she's added to it, but I don't want to be violating any part of the remote laws that are in place for open meeting law. Unfortunately, so unless we can get Anime here in a solid connection. I do want to say that I think that we need to be thinking about specifically this article right now. And part of the issue here is that the selectmen are meeting tonight to kind of decide around what articles are on the, it's kind of like we need to kind of just basically make a decision. Are we going to ask to withdraw this article? And agree that that is not an article that we need to have on the warrant right now, because I'm talking about need here. And I'm talking about COVID expenses, right? Whether you think that this symbolizes something else or not, do we need this article on the warrant for COVID expenses?
Can I ask one?
Added to fiscal because I think that that's the essence of this. We can have a philosophical conversation about
There's still a few questions that we're asking though. So let's ask that you hold off before bringing it to a vote.
I'm not bringing it to a vote, but I do want to make sure that we are focusing this discussion. And that's just my job as chair.
On the essence of the actual, the actual article in question. It's purely about adding money to the school budget for FY21 because of COVID-related expenses, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And by not doing so, well, we could ask for it. And then the town and the warrant commission will stand up there and say they don't need it, right? It'll go back and forth.
And there will be repercussions on next year's budget.
Well, and then instead, I guess that what, if it stays, it opens the door for an on-field debate, if you will. Which I don't think is needed at this point. However, I agree with the with the feeling. I agree with the feeling and I don't know how to I honestly don't know how this vote is going to communicate either way.
If it's in draft form, if it's in draft form now, can they change the wording to say you know, to take out COVID?
I think the idea is just to not have it.
Yeah, Megan, I'm kind of in the same way because what I Yeah, I mean, Megan, I'm kind of in the same way because what I don't like is the precedent for next year because our expenses will be going up, you know, because of COVID. So so I I I kind of look at and I say what bad things happen if we choose not to vote on it? It shows that we're not, I mean, that's that's what I wonder if the selectmen are going to do what they want to do is what I believe is going to happen.
My, yeah, but I think that's a different story. That doesn't say we don't go back and vote a different budget. We can go back. Well, we could. We could say, yeah, we don't need that for this year, right? That money is we don't need that money this year. Mike, Jeff and Michael balance the budget. However, we do need a 4.125 instead.
Well, you're going to use that money, though.
Okay, so can I just interrupt for a second? So the COVID, the the numbers that I read to you, you know, the 869,000 that were over are all due to COVID. They're all due to COVID. So it's extra people we hired. All it's all due to COVID. So I guess I'm not clear why the COVID-19 expense is is a hang up here. I'm just not clear on that. Because this is all due to COVID.
Yeah, I guess Jeff, I'll answer for me is is that what I've observed is if there's stimulus or grants or funding that are COVID relating, I've 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 watched, I said, Michael and Jeff and the team are doing everything in their power to get that. That's what I've, you know, that that's what I've observed. So
Yeah, but these overages in our budget and FY21 are due to COVID. We would not have hired all these people that we had to hire if COVID wasn't exist. So they are related directly to COVID-19 expenses. It all is. It's all COVID-19 expenses. And that's what, again, my recollection of the November 10th meeting was, is that they would provide a safety net for any expenses we go over due to COVID-19.
But we have not gone over. We have managed to find
We are over right now.
We are.
We are.
Have the money to to deal with it.
We are over. And I mean,
But
if we finish the year and don't do what we explained in this memo, then we're over.
Right. But we believe that what is explained in this memo will work. That these are fair, these are hard and conservative numbers, which is the other part of this. Right?
You're like, I'm not I don't think we're voting on the memo that says this is how we're going to do it. I support how we're doing it. I just don't like the precedent that it says, hey, maybe next year the town says the school doesn't need money for COVID related expenses.
You need to
Look, they 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 said we 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 offered that article to them last March and they said, we don't want it. We don't need it.
But that's this year's budget. I
I that doesn't
You can't put money in this year's, but this is the FY21. That's why I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. If we need, if we want, if you want to put more money, Tim, in next year's budget, then we go back and revote a new budget.
Which comes with its own difficulties, but then
I know, Leo, I guess I guess I'm just saying like we had the cushion.
You know?
It's all logistically have to happen, right? We would have to like go take the money and have a surplus this year. But we're not saying that. If we had that money come back, we would have to take that money and pay ahead. I guess, you know, pay ahead into next year's budget, right, Michael and and Jeff? Like, and the logistic of moving the shell around of the money is what we're talking about, I guess, which is not more being just a vote on.
So we tried to do this to be proactive, right? We started to see how the budget was trending very early on. So if you remember correctly, we asked for this meeting to get everyone together. Because we saw the way it was trending and it wasn't trending well at that point. That was November. And a lot of things have changed since November in terms of COVID and how we operate our day to day. So we were looking at that at that point. And at that point, we thought we were going to be in a huge deficit if it continued the way it was at that point. So now it's March and we've looked at everything again and we are in better shape than we thought we were going to be in November. Hey, we could have just thrown this on the town in March if we if we wanted, but we tried to be proactive with this whole process. I I still, I'm not clear on I guess I'm not clear in the COVID-19 apprehension in the in the precedent setting. That's that's not clear to me. I don't understand what that is. The town was doing us a favor by saying, yeah, we'll help you out on this. After they already gave us 820,000 of their CARES Act. So we went to them saying, hey, we're going to be in trouble here. Can you help us? They agreed to help us. And now we're saying, thank you so much for that support, but we don't need it anymore based on what we have here. That that's working together as a team. I don't understand what what the precedent piece is because they are supporting us in that. They supported us with 820,000 and cares. We still needed more at that point in November. The town supported us and said, we're going to be your insurance. And now we're saying, guess what? We figured it out. We got some things now that happened that we didn't think were going to happen that have, and we don't need your insurance anymore. That to me, that's all this is. Oh, and by the way, the 3.99 that you approved that you you voted on in January, that's your budget for FY22. So I guess I I don't, I'm just, I'm getting confused now because I thought it was pretty straightforward about how we're doing this, but maybe I'm not being clear.
No, I I think you, this has been my understanding all along, but all along? Or the last weeks? Yeah, because this is what in the last weeks, this is what we've needed to talk about. I mean, budget season, as you know, runs fast and people work really hard to make things happen. And as Michael and Jeff have been reporting to us throughout around COVID expenses to see what is happening. There's no new news here. We're trying to, what we're trying to do right now is not have a philosophical argument about how town funding goes. What we're trying to say is we have worked very hard or Jeff and Michael have worked very hard on making sure that our expenses are managed. And that the town provided us a safety net. And now we need to decide whether we're going to withdraw or actually lend our support to withdrawing this warrant committee article that asks for them to provide, to continue to provide us the safety net which will be debated on the football field at night. And is that necessary? Is that necessary right now? Because this isn't about chapter 70 money or anything else. We're really looking at, and I'm I'm sorry that that I use your phrase, Tim boiling the ocean, but I think we're trying to boil the ocean. When really what we have here is a very small intervention that is essentially removing more churn. Right? Right now, as it looks with conservative estimates, this far into the fiscal year, we will not need those we will not need the town to come in and rescue us with a certain amount. So do we support withdrawing that warrant article? And it's just a support. But do we, as we look at this specifically, this article? Do we support withdrawing this article? Will there be any money for us to ask for? Right? Like what? I mean, that's the other part of this procedurally. If we put this before the town and we say, we would like to ask for you know, we've done all this work, we've done prepay and we've got credits and we know things are coming back and you've given us this or at least shared your money with us. And we've done this one kind of med field thing. And now we would like this much from the coffers to make up for those COVID-19 expenses that we were not able to cover. Would we even be able to ask for an amount of money? Right? Because that's the warrant article that we are looking at right now. Is there any amount of money that we would be able to ask for in support of this article if we said we didn't want to take it off? Now, the fact of the matter is, we probably aren't going to have much choice because they're going to look at it and they're going to say, we don't need this article. But we could demonstrate ourselves as being you know, also looking strategically at this. We could demonstrate that we take responsibility for this.
That's it. There's a, there is a, this is the toughest year ever for the budget, right? The fact that everyone's in it and I think we have to put the past on pause as we deal with this year. And I feel like this entire vote is just saying we hear you, we're working with you. Let's get past this and get into the new year. And that's I'm sure they're all relieved about being able to balance it and not have to go to the floor about moving money either. Even though I know it's sitting there, but there's money that had to have been spent out of the rainy day fund or whatever we call it, free cash. But I know we were going to hit up free cash and I know we're not in great shape as far as free cash goes. I know we are, aren't. So this town is recovering from a series of difficult budgeting decisions. And I'm being polite about that. What's that?
3.3 million dollars in free cash.
Right. It needs to be
In 10 years.
Yes, and it needs to sit at a certain spot, notice us to get a double A rating by Reuters. But we were reduced two years ago. We were, we were reduced because of it, because we were using free cash all the time to balance the the budget each time. And and I get this out of this and there's lots of reasons. I'm not blaming the town for everything, but there's a lot of, you know, animal control officers and stuff, right?
No, no, no. Okay, no, we're not even going there.
Anyway, there's a lot of stuff.
One small article.
All right. And the and this vote and this vote is just saying we don't need this article. I'm not voting to say we don't need the money. I'm just voting to say we balanced the budget.
So so Leo, and that that's I this is, I don't know, it it is, I guess it's interesting because I I think it is, you know, you said philosophical. I don't know that it's philosophical. You know, we I I and I'm guessing everybody in this room, we don't love the budget as it currently stands. I don't like the cuts from last year. I can live with it. So I just say, is it essential for us to vote to remove this article? If if they're going to remove it for us anyways, why do we put our stamp on removing it? And and help me understand that. That's all I'm saying, because if that seems to be the course that it's on, then I at least am not saying, hey, I I love it the way it is. You know, I I mean, that that's just where I, that's why I paused on this. And like, Kate, I I want to fully understand it.
So basically, I think what it says is we we are in support of removing it. I mean, I think that sometimes you just have to say yay or nay, we are in support or we are not in support of something. And I don't want to and this is the money that we had a three way meeting with the selectman and the warrant committee with and and they and and we agreed to the safety net. And now that the safety net is no longer needed but remains on the warrant during this period of time where we kind of throw in and throw out warrants as we look at how the meeting goes and what's important with the budget and how we balance. We are saying that we support the warrant committee in their thoughts that we do not need this specific ask, right? We are not going to annual town meeting with our hat in our hands saying, can we have this money? Because we don't need to. And it's okay to support that. It's okay to say, thank you. But no, thanks. And let's get it off the warrant before it becomes one, a matter of discussion at where it is not needed at annual town meeting or it gets thrown out for us. Which is also
There's two other items to here, too. There's also a perception issue. By the time May rolls around and the weather's nice and you know, vaccinations are going to be full on and there's going to be some sense of small normalcy back to rehash through the past year again is like dragging back to, it's not really mud on us, but just dragging through the pain everyone went through. And I feel like pers from a perception perspective, if we can avoid doing that and then talk about heading into the fall for a new school year where we're going to need things and it's going to come up and we can bring them up and get ramped up for the next budget year. And we have a building project that we're going to be asking of support for. So I think I think perception wise, if it just, I don't know, I think it looks better not to have an an argument on or have a discussion on the field in front of the town from that perspective. At the same time, I understand the principle of what we're saying. I completely understand. And I think, and I know Jeff just left for a second, but I feel like we're doing this to empower Jeff and Michael to go back and work with the town departments accordingly. And that and then I think that's, I feel like that's what's needed for them. I think the vote is needed for them to go back and say administration and school committee are on the same page. And and we can proceed. I mean, I'm not sure.
Leo, that that at least helps us to, you know, they're they're having, I I understand.
I'm not just like, I agree with your feelings. I agree with both of your feelings, but I feel like
I don't think anybody does it, right?
I know. At the same time, I also feel like I agree with the fact that we don't need to rehash out the all these expenses. Uh, you know, on the football field, you know?
Yeah, I don't think it would get there. Jeff was taking Advil for the popsicle headache, I assume.
Yeah, that's that's started about 4:15, but no, I just had to run to the restroom.
Yeah. So let me ask, is there really anything else to say specifically about this article? The article being that we would go to the town to ask for monies for COVID expenses above and beyond what we have already spent for fiscal year 21. Do we feel as though we could bring that to a vote?
Megan, do you have anything else?
No. Okay, now it's entirely possible that this could be a hung vote. I don't know that that I honestly don't know the ramifications that this could be a no vote. This could be unanimous vote. It doesn't matter. This is what we're here for. I do think that there are ramifications to all of those things. So do I hear a motion on the floor to
And and I want to just ask, hold on a second. Hold on a second.
What?
A procedural question is, or does this need to go out for public input before taking a vote?
I can suspend policy, but I know actually I think it probably
Do it.
Does, yeah. So do we have, again, and I can't see if anybody's here right now.
Oh.
I also don't know. I don't have an attendee list, huh?
There is one person in the
I'm sorry. There is one person in the audience. Okay. So is there public comment? I now invite this public comment for consideration on this matter only. And so that would be Article seven COVID related expenses. We can ask clarifying questions. Hold on.
A person, a person has said they have no input in the chat.
I was just looking to stall a minute.
Yeah.
I'm joking, I'm joking.
All right.
But I did want to make sure sometimes we have all these open meeting law things come up and I want to just
Yeah, that wouldn't be a part of an open meeting law, but it is our policy and we should do it. So thank you, Tim. Appreciate it.
I was actually curious if this person had any input on this one, to be honest.
All right. So at this point, do we feel as though there's any other useful discussion on this topic? Do we feel as though we have kind of gone over every part of this that we can right now? Specifically voting on Article seven, which relates specifically to coming to the town to ask them to cover additional COVID response expenses. And if you'd like me to, I can I can reread it, but I really wouldn't go into the semantics of it too much.
So moved.
I'm sorry, what?
Yeah, I see it. I I don't need you to reread it. I see it.
So Leo moves to withdraw the article, recommend to withdraw the article. Do I have a second? Anime, will you be participating in this vote?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Been able to hear us through this time. I know that you've been able to
I have.
Okay.
Are you seconding?
I am seconding. Thank you.
Okay, so Leo put through the motion, Anime seconded. And I'm going to do a roll call vote. A yes vote would be we are in support of withdrawing Article seven. A no vote will mean that you are not in support and you would like A no vote will mean that you are not in support and you would like the selectmen to continue to include it on the warrant. Okay, so I'll go through our usual. Leo Bram?
Uh, aye.
Okay, Tim Knight?
I'd abstain.
All right, Megan Glenn?
No.
Okay, Anime O'Shea Brook? Anime O'Shea Brook?
Yes.
Okay, and Jessica Riley, yes. Okay, so the motion passes with three ayes, one nay, and one abstention. Okay, thank you very much.
Just made. History made.
Oh, yeah, you know, I, that was just a.
And Sharon Tatro, just for the end. And Sharon Tatro just arrived, just for the end.
All right, well.
You missed public comment.
Okay, hold on. We're just going to move on from here. So the motion does pass. Um, and I will uh, kind of inform Sharon of that after this and before the selectmen's meeting this evening. Um, Jeff, do you have any other items since posting on March 23rd?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, at this point, we are going to wrap up the meeting. Our next meeting is on April 1st, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Um, and do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. And Leo, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Tim Knight, second. All right, and Leo Bram?
No.
Come on, Leo. You don't want to, it's a roll call. It's about whether you're here or not. Not gonna.
Okay, fine, I.
All right, okay, thank you. So if you don't want to join the meeting, you can just sit here, but I'm done. Okay, so Leo, your, your serious vote is aye to adjourn.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And Tim Knight?
Aye.
Okay, and Megan?
Aye.
And Anime? Zinging through 3,000 miles, Anime O'Shea Brook? Anime?
Hi.
Thank you.
Hi, yes, sorry, yes.
Okay. Great, got it. And Jessica Riley, yes. Meeting is adjourned at 5:43 PM. And I will see you soon. Thank you very much. Take care.
Everybody, thank you.